Good evening. I'd like to call the board meeting for January 13th, 2016 to order. Can we have our roll call, please? Mrs. Klein.
Yes, Mr. Alexandrovich.
Here.
Mrs. Witkowski.
Here.
Mr. Nielsen is excused. Mrs. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Lewis is also excused. Mrs. Larson is going to be late and I am here.
Thank you. Has the meeting been properly posted, Dr. Pass?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three on the agenda is community comment. For board policy, we allowed fifteen minutes of community comment. Is there any comment tonight? Hearing none. We'll move on to item four, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Witkowski, second by Mr. Alexandrovich. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five, school board announcements. Do we have any announcements?
I was able to attend the student breakfast in December for the new school students. I think Steve was there also and it was a great bunch of kids and a great bunch of parents.
Thank you. Anything else? I just want to announce that next week is the 95th 2016 State Educational Convention. And I did see they're screening a film called Reject. The social rejection has an impact on human life. So for those of us attending, I think that'll be an interesting film to see. And I guess that's all we have for announcements then. And item six, school board calendar, regular board meeting on Wednesday, January 27th, 2016, here at the Education and Community Center at 6:00 PM. And then a regular board meeting on Wednesday, February 10th, 2016, here at the VCC at 6:00 PM. And then it's 6:02. I'd like to just, for the record, say that Mrs. Larson has arrived. And then item seven is the liaison reports. We have personnel and policy. Mrs. Witkowski.
Yes, we have a number of items related to immunizations and school nursing. So, let's see. We have, first one is Policy 5312, pupil immunization. And basically, it updates everything to what currently is being done. There was, I know that there's been a lot of changes at the state level. And this kind of brings everything up to date. Did you, somebody want to add? I think the major change I saw was that there is a new report being submitted to the city Franklin Public Health Department. There's a new kind of report being submitted, is that correct?
It's not a new kind of report. It's just that from August, we were requested not to send a full report to the health department with the name of students who are not compliant with immunization. Same to, was sent to the district DA before we sent the names of noncompliant students. And because of some complaints from parents that would, they pretty much said that that would be in violation with FERPA and that not to send the names. So the change is that we only send a summary of the numbers of students who are not compliant, not the names.
Any other questions?
I have one and maybe this is being nitpicky, but here I go.
That's what we do as schooners.
The second paragraph, which is now the first paragraph, in bold it says, the last sentence, "These requirements can be waived only for health, religious, or personal conviction reasons." And then if you move down to item number seven, which is now number three, talking about "School principals shall ensure that students K through 12 who do not comply with the immunization requirements are excluded from the school after the thirtieth school day." Should there be something in there? Comply with immunization requirements or have a proper waiver or something? Because it seems like we, we don't mention the waiver here, but we mentioned it up above as, as one of the things you can do to not have the immunizations and still comply.
It's understood that if you sign a waiver, you are in compliance. So that's, I think that's the rationale.
Okay. Sometimes...
I can, I can add that if that would be clear to all.
Anybody else see there's an issue? If not, I, like I said, I was being nitpicky about it.
Yeah. There are two ways to be compliant. You receive your immunization or you sign a waiver. And in the state of Wisconsin, where after you sign a waiver, you are in compliance.
I, I don't see that as an issue unless other board members see that as an issue. I mean, I would default to, to the nurses as that. But, I mean, if you're adamant about it...
No, I'm not. Like I said, I was just being nitpicky. I caught that and I go, is that right? So I brought it up.
It says those who not compliant with immunization requirements. So that is implied if you have...
And immunization requirements are not only having the shots, but it's also signing a waiver.
Right.
The requirements would be the immunization or the waiver.
Okay. Thank you.
But I do have a question about under, striking the, the items under the Director of Pupil Services shall. When, when you're striking annually provide to the principals the updated immunization requirements, how, how will we still provide that? I mean, I'm sure it's going to be provided. So you don't have that anywhere else that it's being provided. So who will provide it?
The state of Wisconsin each August annually sends out this booklet to each school.
Okay.
Along with the district office here. So we receive a copy of it. So we thought that the Director of Pupil Services piece was kind of an additional step that wasn't necessary as the state sends this directly to each principal.
I see.
And it's, it wasn't really reflective of practice. The pupil service director never really did that. We trained the staff after we received this and analyzed to see if there are any changes in the law and, and the changes in the procedure. And we directly work with the principals and the school staff to make sure that they have what they need to come up with a report for the health department.
Okay, that makes sense. And then under, under, the school district provides, under number three, you're striking annually and then you have as needed. How do you determine as needed? Is it only when a problem arises?
What, what number is that again?
Under school responsibilities. It says the school district and then item number three.
From being around a couple of rounds in the sun, I have seen a lot of changes in the requirements, immunizations that like chicken pox and MMR. We usually only had one and then there was proven ineffective. And then the requirement became to have two MMRs. So as needed, as those laws are passed in the, in the state, we have to provide that information and the requirements to the parents. If, if a student comes in from our state with different requirements, we always make sure that they have the requirements for the state of Wisconsin.
Thank you. That's all I have. Anyone else? All right. Then do I hear a motion? Or, I have to see what number this was. Do I hear a motion to approve the revisions to Board Policy 5312?
I made the motion.
I, I think Mr. Alexandrovich got the motion first and a second by... Mrs. Witkowski? All right. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay. Then the next one we have up is Policy 5319, nursing delegation. And that one, again, is an update. And it seems, in looking through it, I really don't, I couldn't say how I would summarize the changes other than it seems to be... Unless you could add something. I don't, I really couldn't say what. It just seems to be some minor, very minor updates.
We both thought it was important to, to add the training right in the first paragraph because there's a very big difference between training and delegation. And being new to this, to the school setting, Lori had to explain to her husband what's the difference between training and delegation. So let her explain.
He had asked me what the difference was in probably a good example that would make sense to everyone. If I would talk with you guys about signs of first aid procedures, some things that you could do to help someone who's having a seizure, I would be doing some training on that piece of first aid procedures. Delegation, on the other hand, would be, for example, I would be working with someone who is caring for a specific student who has diabetes and how we would work to give that student appropriate insulin. And there would be step-by-step, specific things that we would need to do, that I would need to make sure that they were competent in doing. So that would be the delegation piece.
So training would be more broader to a large group and same steps applicable to anyone? Delegation's more individualized.
Are there any questions about Policy 5319?
So generally speaking, though, there's a lot of delegation that goes on, but are staff comfortable with that? Or is there an issue with staff being put in a position that maybe they don't want to be in or...
Absolutely not.
Okay. They're all very willing to...
It's very clear upon the job requirements what's expected. And a few years back, we had to really define that, that this is a job requirement. So if, you know, it's an expectation and so if you're not comfortable with those jobs listed at, when you apply for the job, then you shouldn't be applying for. So that's, that's the major. We make sure that they understand they, if, if there, there is a new need for training for some, something like seizure, caring for a child with seizure, I'd like to, to be there as they can observe a couple of times the procedure being done by, by someone who is already comfortable and trained until that person can say, okay, I wanted to try now. Same thing with diabetes, same thing with small viral nebulizer, G tube feedings, intermittent catheterizations, all kinds of nursing procedures.
But the policy does say they can't give any medications except by...
The state, the state of Wisconsin, the pupil, administration of pupil medications, this is the, the reference is the 118.29. It says that nobody can be expected to give medication by any other route other than ingestion if you're not a healthcare professional. You cannot require that. If, if that's been said, you know, if it's, if something that you agree or you are willing to be trained, it's a different, you cannot be, I guess, forced. But if you're willing to, to be trained, if you agree that this is something I think I can do, it's, it's, it's not prohibited.
And we have staff members that are willing to do those things for our students.
Okay.
And we respect those who are not able for one reason or the other to do a procedure. We find another person to do.
Okay.
Do I hear a motion to approve Board Policy 5319 as revised?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Larson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Klein. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chason, Ms. Neilson. You're coming. Thank you.
Okay. Then the last one we have is the Policy 3611, building access and security. And there were, there were some last minute changes proposed. So we have a copy. Did you need copies over here?
We're good.
You're good?
I think I have enough.
So some of the changes that we made here was to kind of clarify that this is the employee, employees' access, not general public access.
When you say we, you mean you as the liaison and Dr....
Yes, there was a communication.
Okay.
I was confused by, you know, really what it was trying to address. So I think this clarifies it is for employees. And the unrestricted access was also unclear to me as to what that meant.
I think, pardon me, Ms. Witkowski, it had originally said normal. So Ms. Witkowski had asked to kind of clarify what normal meant. So we agreed that unrestricted was a better term to use to describe that group of individuals.
Because normal, to me, suggested normal during the day and really it was just the opposite. It looks like it's just the opposite. So that change was made. And then the additional access is for during non-major school hours. We can get some additional access in the building. So that was the policy changes, essentially just clarifying, I think, the language. Otherwise, the intent is the same. And then on the second page of administrative rules, I don't know if Mr., who wants to... Obviously, the high school area was added because of the remodel. We now have the use of key card access, which has got to be a lot easier to manage than keys. So that's clarified who, who would get those and under what circumstances. And then in the elementary schools, the difference would be, there was, there's no relation to the compensation that was removed. That language was moved. Am I capturing the...
Yes. And as well as, excuse me, when this policy was originally written, the middle school and the high school were excluded from additional access for staff. And so elementary, the middle school uses the elementary model and the high school having its own model of having the key card access. So that's why you see that broken down into two groups.
I have a question, Mark. At the elementary level, when staff signs in outside business hours, they log that they're in the building. I assume with the key card, that's all tracked electronically who's in the building. So is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So if there were an emergency of some sort, how quickly could you access that data and determine who might be in the building in case we need to evacuate quickly or something like that?
It's not really set up for that purpose. It's set up for tracking if, if something, something is stolen or something who might be in the building. The real, the real reason is, is that if I go in there and it's a Saturday and I'm a teacher and I go in there and then somebody comes in behind me and then I leave and I don't know they're there and I set the alarm off, the alarm goes off.
Sure.
With the high school, we have the alarm automatically arm and disarm at, before and after these times.
Okay.
So that it's ahead of when we, so that, so that there's no alarm on. It's strictly the door lock.
Okay.
Whereas at the elementary and middle school, they have to use both a key and an alarm and a code for the alarm.
Okay.
I think one thing that's important on these policies is certainly the security is the number one issue, but we want our staff to have access to our buildings. They command, our teachers put in a tremendous amount of hours, after-hours and weekends and so on. And when they were restricted, it didn't make any sense to us. So we changed that because they do belong having access to those buildings. I mean, if you can't trust them, who can you trust? So I think it's important from that end.
But if one of those key cards is lost, then you can, on the computer, just...
Yes.
Remove it. Okay.
And it, and it already has happened. Lost or broken, we've had a couple fail. I think we sit on it and we bend it enough that we could break it.
What happens in summer, then? Nothing changes?
I'm sorry?
What happens in summer? Nothing changes? When school's not in session? Summer?
Nothing changes at the high school, but at the elementary levels, they turn in their keys and that allows us to, to manage so that we can clean the building. And they don't really need to be in there during the summer. We give them, we give them a few, you know, a week or so after school ends and a week or so before school starts to come in. But then we need, otherwise, sure as heck, they walk through our brand-new floor finish or dirty something up that we just cleaned or do something. So we take away their... And that's, that, turning in my keys has been a long-term, that's a check, part of the checkout procedure. That actually predates this.
At the high school, is the same thing happen? That their access gets turned off or...
No. At the high school, the building is so large and so well-used that you really, you can't have that expectation. So we have to work around everybody.
I like the changes to unrestricted and...
Well, I can tell you where normal came from. I mean, originally, when we did this, we had, we didn't have any access. So we called it, so normal was the custodians and administrators. So that's where the word normal came from. And then additional act, because at the time, when this was first written, whatever the date is, because I wrote it, it was, it was additional access was truly addition at that time.
I see.
So that's where that wording came from.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve Board Policy 3611 as revised?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Larson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Witkowski. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay. We are on item 8A, the District Audit Report.
Tonight, we have the report on our 2014-15 financial audit. And we have with us Brian Mecknick from Riley, Penner &amp; Benton and Michelle Elsheskey, our comptroller, to kind of go over the highlights of that and answer any questions you might have.
Hi, welcome.
All right. Thank you. As Jim said, I'm Brian Mecknick. I'm the partner on the engagement. And kind of just, kind of go through the highlight of the audit. I know you received it in advance, so if you have any questions, just feel free to ask. So the financial statements are presented fairly. It's an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, which is what you're looking for. We had no problems that were encountered during the audit. We have full cooperation with staff. Some of the financial results, your operating results, your general fund, you had a decrease in your fund balance of $50,029. And then your general fund balance, you have non-spendable fund balance of $377,000, which is your prepaid expenses at year-end. And then we have unassigned of $16,669,000. And then we have your expenditures, your budget, this is for the general fund, your budget total of $55,393. Your actual expenditures were $52,998. So you spent 95.68% of your budget. So you're under budget for the expenses. Revenues, your budget $52,711. Your actual revenues were $52,947. So you received 100.45% of your budget revenue. Then your debt activity, your payments on your general obligation debt were at $2,580,000. Your interest payments were at $1,900,000. Then capital activity, you'll notice that there's in your capital, there was $32,743 in construction in progress. I think in the current year, approximately $11 million of that was current year additions. And that project will be completed this next year. And those will be capitalized at that time and depreciated. Then we also have other post-employment benefit. We have a footnote on this. This is your OPEB and your stipend cost. The annual costs this year were $1,219,000. Contributions made, so payments for OPEB and stipend, were at $1,437,000. And then you also had adjustments due to change in benefits. The benefits were decreased. So that actually decreased your, like, $2,848,000. So we have net OPEB stipend obligations of $11,471,000. And then we have a GASB 68. This is the first year that you'll see that there's GASB 68. And this is for recording the pension. This is what you have at WRS. So we actually had a prior period, we call it an adjustment. It adjusted the beginning fund, not fund balance, net position by $8,928,704,000. And this accounts for the money that you have in your WRS already that's considered pension assets and then deferred outflows and inflows. So when you look at your, at your statements, at the end of June 30th of 2015, you have net pension assets of $4,978,000. You have deferred outflows of $4,085,000. Deferred inflows, which are negative, is $60,481,000. So your net pension reserved for the WRS was $9,3,896,000. So in this case, your assets, your deferred outflows and inflows, they equal what we have restricted for the WRS liability. The current year activity is $75,192,000. So it really has no effect on the overall expenses that you have, that you're budgeting for. It's just pretty much for the GASB statement, so. Single audit, we had two findings, which we talked about in the management letter. First one is period of availability. And they were small, $3,000, I think, was the total expenses, but required to report it. It's not considered like a finding or anything that you'll, a question cost because of the dollar amount, but we're still required to disclose it. And that was for expenses that were from the 12, 13 school year that were charged or expensed in the 14, 15 year and then charged that expense to that grant for that year where they were supposed to be charged the year before. So it's a period of availability. And I think you had underspent that year and DPI will send you a question. I'm sure that everything will be fine. And then eligibility, we do eligibility testing for the grants. And there was one individual that we selected that did not have the appropriate license. So the, the question cost associated with that, the person's had license in the past, they renewed their license now. I think it was, they just had to go to the DPI and register. So that should not be an issue as well. But those are items that you want to make sure you have controls in place to make sure that, that every, every teacher has a license, especially for the special ed. Because pretty much when we're doing our audit testing, we're looking at the special ed licenses to make sure that they're licensed in, in the area that they're serving. So, and you guys have put procedures in place, so that should not happen again. And then another comment in the management letter that we've had every year since the accounting standards changed, where we're required to report significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. We have a significant deficiency for the appropriation of the financial statements. The only things that we're really supposed to write with this are the opinion letters, all the disclosures, all the GASB 68 adjustments and everything should be done by the district. I have zero districts that actually do that. So I would say probably in the state, 99% of the districts received this comment for preparation of the financial statement. So there's really, we're required to disclose it, so that's what we do. Any questions that you had reviewing the audit or anything I just covered?
How many districts do you audit?
Our firm, we do about 35.
35?
Yes.
You said that we were at 104% of revenue and 95% of budgeted expenses.
Right.
How typical is that of the districts that you audit?
It's, well, you guys actually budgeted for a deficit of about $2 million. So, so coming in ahead, it actually, it, you can't really, because every district, it's all based on how they're doing their budgeting. Some usually budget more for revenue, hoping that they're going to get more. So it's, you guys actually, with being $50,000 off from decrease in fund balance, when you're budgeting for $2 million, it's actually pretty good. So, so it's, 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 you can't really compare to other districts.
Okay. It sounded really good to me, too. And I was just wondering if you were going to say something.
No. It is, it is.
Very good.
Everybody does like that.
It's a shame for a compliment.
Right. Now, when you're budgeting for a two-million-dollar deficit and you're actually in at fifty thousand, that's really good, so.
So, this GASB sixty-eight thing also, so that kind of results in a positive increase in our fund balance, about nine million dollars, is that typical, other districts you audit also?
It all depends on the size of the district, because this is the, the money that, that has been paid into the WRS over the years. So, it all depends, it's based on your payroll, and they take, what are the percentages now are? Six, eight for the districts, and then about the same for the employee. So, it's all based on your total salaries that you have for the district. So, this is a decent size.
But generally, it's been a positive for every district?
Correct, yes.
Because you're bringing that onto the, the statements.
Correct.
What about the other post-employment benefits, the ones that we adjusted?
The OPEB. Actually, you adjusted it, so it decreased your liability about two million eight hundred and forty-three thousand. And I don't recall exactly what it was that you guys decreased in your OPEB liability. Was something cut back?
Health insurance.
Health insurance. And since they started the OPEB, and they've actually put this on their books, and they actually saw what the numbers were, a lot of the districts have discontinued new hires, they don't get a lot of these OPEB benefits, or they've decreased the benefits, and actually, you guys have done that, you've done the stipends. Some have done that for the, the current retirees, or people that are retiring, they'll give them a stipend, because it's a benefit that they've, they've lost. So, actually, a lot of districts, you, you will see this liability going down, because they actually see what the numbers are, and they're, they're actually huge. And it's, not a lot of places get those kind of benefits, so. So, that's kind of, that's very common that you'll see when you have a new actuarial study done, which you guys had this current year, as of July first of two thousand fourteen, that June thirtieth of two thousand fifteen was the first year that decreased your, your liability by almost three million dollars, so.
On page ten, you have a statement that says that the resident-student census is expected to fluctuate over the next five years due to the economy, and you say that every year.
No, this is the, the district's comment. This, this first section is the, the management discussion analysis, and that's completed by the district.
Okay, we say that every year. Does it ever not fluctuate?
It's true every year.
It is true.
We're, we're in that point right now where we're growing a little bit, or maybe we're down a little bit. We aren't, we aren't in that mode where, like in the nineties, where subdivisions were coming in left and right, and we could easily say we're, we're growing by large amounts. Now, we don't know. Each year, there's very little growth in the number of students, and we have a lot of students leave and new students come in, so that growth represents an even bigger shift in the number of students. So, you're never quite positive what's going to happen with that, and that's why we put that statement in there.
Well, I would agree with you that we never, we just don't know, but I was just, it's just interesting to see it every year, so that's why I questioned it. But yeah, I would agree. I also found it interesting that on page seven, the pie charts of the breakdown of expenditures, that we're spending more on instruction now, forty-six percent on instruction and fifty-four percent on support, and last year it was forty-one percent on instruction and fifty-nine percent on support, so I'm happy to see that.
That's related to construction, correct?
No, that doesn't affect the instru, well, actually, that, that does, because that's included, this is on the, the district-wide statements, so that does make a difference, because the year before you had, what, we had, we had about twenty-one million the year before in capital projects, and eleven million this year, so that could be account for the majority of the decrease in the support. If you look back by three years, the instruction was probably even a lot higher than it was last year and this year.
I just have a quick question, page forty-three, is the special revenue trust, I know, Jim, you answered my question as saying it was Fund Twenty-One, but, you know, Fund Twenty-One means comes after Fund Twenty. I didn't know what Fund Twenty-One was.
It's like gifts, money that you receive that are restricted for certain purposes, so any gifts that the district receives that goes to Fund Twenty-One?
It's a million four.
What are some of the other items that go in there?
We have a million four in cash.
Oh, a million, million one fifty was transferred, which is, one time you can do that, was this year, because DPI changed the requirements with Fund Eighty, and you could use unrestricted net assets in Fund Eighty that was, that was not tax-loving money. You could transfer that one time, you had to get board approval and do it in this, last year, and you guys
So, that was from community service?
Correct.
Yes.
And it's considered a special revenue?
Correct.
Because it's non-
Because, because of the change and how DPI, what they're saying, can and cannot go into Fund Eighty, they're, they gave people a one-time opportunity to get some money out of there.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
On page forty-six, can, can you explain the alcohol and other drug abuse, the one thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars?
That's a grant that you received from the state, and those monies were expended towards the year-end, that's why the money hasn't been received yet.
Okay.
So, in the last column, that's what the state paid subsequent to June thirtieth, but the expenses were actually incurred before June thirtieth.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you very much
All right, thank you.
For your time, thank you. Okay. Next, we have item eight B, the Buildings and Grounds Annual Report and a Safety Report. Mr. Cludier.
I'm back.
Yes, you are. In the hot seat there.
So, the, the first page that you, that I sent you is this year, the things that we did. We, we planned to do one large project last year, and that was Pleasant View. I hope you've had an opportunity to see it, it's quite different now, and it drains well, which is a big difference. As I tried to explain last year, Robinwood is like a rock in a river, or Pleasant View is like a rock in a river, everything tries to flow around it, so we, we needed to, rather than fight Mother Nature, work with Mother Nature. So, that was a fairly extensive project, and as you can see, we, we took one, we had a design number, but then we also took one general contractor bid for the five eighty-five, and then we ran into some bad soils, so that we don't run into the same problem in the future. We had to reroute some drain piping, the rest of those things are additional, are change orders, some of which were Mark started, for example, the additional front walk. As I looked at the design, it just made sense to expand that and make it a little bit better, so, those kinds of things. And then we bought some of the owner-supplied items, would be the play structure and the site amenities and the additional basketball poles. So, that would be those things. So, that came out to seven hundred and twenty-nine, seven hundred and twenty thousand three hundred and eighty-nine dollars. So, since we tried to, you know, plan our work and then work our plan, we then, additional items come up. So, the gym curtain at Southwood Glen, which is well over twenty years old, failed, so we replaced that. We are, we have a, some of the Robinwood door frames are starting to rot out, so we're replacing those with a better door. Robinwood donated playground site work, that probably was something that was in your gifts, where Robinwood's PTO gave us, I want to say forty thousand dollars for the structure, we buy the whole. So, we do the, we do the site work, so that's what that is about. We needed to expand the weight room, so we moved the fence. The, we were getting quite a number of complaints from the baseball parents and everything, that the ball, that the foul balls were coming and hitting their cars and hitting them and coming into the football stadium, so we had to, we raised the fence at the, at the, at the baseball, at home plate. The leaking bubbler in the gym was, it's quite a high number, but we had to rebuild the wall to actually make it fit, so that we could still get a drinking fountain, a new, modern stainless steel one, and in a, and in a gymnasium, it needs to be recessed, you don't want kids to be running into it, so. The Southwood Glen, replacing the hot water heating system, that was something that was on the list previously, the, the longer list, that we'll review second. But it, it moved forward because the, the, the unit failed, so we had to replace it. Then there's a number of asphalt repairs, which are ongoing every year, as I've talked to you before, these are, these are minor repairs, but there's three things we need to keep, cyclical items that we need to keep moving forward on, roofs, HVAC, and pavement. So, it, so in my next, you'll see pavement. Then we had, well, there's a roofing issue at Ben Franklin. It's odd, but just the ridge vent, if you're familiar with that, just that ridge vent on, on, on Ben Franklin's roof failed. The other, the other shingles are fine. Then Robinwood, the transom panels over all those exterior doors we're replacing, and we had a large heat circulating pump at the high school fail. The two items that I've, I've highlighted in yellow are ones that we still intend to do this year. One would be those lunch tables at Robinwood, they're beginning to fail, and they're in the wall, and we're currently working out to see if we can figure out a way to get them out of the walls, because those are very limiting and very problematic to a, to a freestanding table, we're just looking for a space to store them, so we're currently working through those issues. And then at Pleasant View, we're going to add some sink cabinets and some casework in the, in those classrooms, and add hot water, because when we built it in the sixties, and I don't know if you can imagine trying to run an elementary classroom without hot water at the sink, they didn't, they did not supply hot water to the sinks in, in the old part of the building, so that's part of this process as well. So, those two items I still intend to do this year, I'm working on getting the pricing, and as you can see, we have about a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars to accomplish those.
When you say those tables are, lunch tables are in the wall, you mean they pull in and out?
They fold up into the wall.
Oh, they fold up, okay.
Yeah, we have them at Pleasant View, we really don't have a choice, because there's no place to store them. But at Robinwood, we think we found a place to store them, we just have to work it out and see whether or not we can make the tables fit into there, and then you can get a freestanding table, and it's a lot more flexible and easier for the guy to lift, who has to fold them up every day. Any questions about this part, about what happened this year?
The budget for PV was, I think, nine hundred thousand dollars, so it was a very good, very good
Yes.
project. I'm curious as to where the, so did the bid, the big bid come in less than you guys expected, did we?
Yes.
Where was the favorable, even though we have bad soils, we still were able to take advantage of a very good environment, bid environment, or?
Yeah, we, we expected the bid to come in somewhere around eight hundred thousand and with about a hundred, you know, with a hundred thousand dollars in bad soils and such, and it came in at five eighty-five. So, we were very happy with that.
The retaining pond fence, did it end up being four feet tall?
No, six.
It is six?
Oh, yeah, it's six. What she's referring to is, in her term as an alderman, they, somebody asked at the, at the approval meeting if it could be lower to four feet, because it would look ugly. I, I pushed back, because I thought for the safety of the children, it needed to be a six-foot-tall fence, so that's what it is. So, any questions about this year's? Next year, I changed the format a little bit, because I thought it would, it would make more sense than to try to pull them up to the top. So, what I did is I put them, I put the items into a separate column, and then we would add that column separately. Now, you may have seen the emails, there was a, the bottom number has changed a bit, but really, as I moved things up above the line, I would hide the rows, but I did not adjust the, the range for the formula. And I did it two years in a row. My best explanation is, is that I'm human and, you know, loser, that's about the best I can tell you. So, that's why the number was forty-seven, forty-seven million forty thousand five hundred, and that last year's number was forty-seven six thirty-five five hundred, so you can see it went down, it didn't go down the whole nine hundred thousand that would have been budgeted for that project, but that's because I also update these pricings. So, the last year's correct number is forty-seven million six hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred, and this year's correct number is forty-seven million forty thousand five hundred. Now, so, based on that, we have the high school, which has major stuff done to it, we have the middle school that we're looking at a, a possible referendum in the future, we have, Pleasant View's going to have summer school, because St. Martin's Road is being, going to be worked on this year. Ben Franklin will have kids' club, and quite honestly, it's the newer building, it doesn't have the greatest, greater needs than most of the other buildings. So, we're concentrating on Pleasant View, Robinwood, and, I'm sorry, Countrydale, Robinwood, and Southwood Glen. So, Southwood Glen, continuing with those cyclical, big, big-ticket items, their, their playground and their parking areas really need to be redone. We've had some minor patching done to them, but we really need to take a holistic approach and really get down there. And one of the things they don't do is they don't put enough rock underneath that asphalt, and that's really what we go, that and drainage, so we'll be doing a lot of drainage as well in that, for that school. The difference there is we have storm drains, city storm drains, so we just have to hook up to them, we don't have to take it around to a pond, thank goodness. So, I've highlighted the items that we're going to do this year. You know, Countrydale, we have the east restrooms, it'd be the last two sets of student restrooms that we'd like to redo, at some point, we'll need to do the staff restrooms. They are from the fifties, those restrooms. There's, there's, there's a couple of door frames that we need to do, they're those next two items. Then, item thirteen at Forest Park, we do need to do something there, because there's an ex, the, the, the current sixth grade is larger than the eighth grade, so we're, and we're, and we're at capacity for lockers, so we're going to have to add a few lockers, and I'm, we're estimating approximately forty lockers to accomplish that, so that every kid has one. Then on the second page, we're concentrating on Robinwood, where we can do some operable walls there, those walls between classrooms for some team teaching and some flexibility. Adding casework, that's going to be similar to what we're trying to do at Pleasant View, we're going to take out, although they do have hot water, take out the, the, they built, they built Robinwood on the cheap, back in the sixties. So, in ninety-five, we concentrated a lot on the building envelope, because they were actually getting frost on the insides of the windows. So, in ninety-five, when we renovated that building, we really concentrated on the envelope, well, now it's time to go back in there and get rid of some of the things, these tiny little sink cabinets, they're like that, and they got a goofy little sink in. And so, it's time, I think it's, it's time now, since we have an opportunity to concentrate on Robinwood. And again, we want to add a couple of operable walls there, I'm working with Chad Nelson, the principal, as to where it makes sense, so we can do some team teaching and some flexibility. And then, of course, the big one, Southwood Glen, the guestimate is five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but again, it's, it's rebuilding that asphalt, getting into it, getting a sub base that holds up, getting some drain piping in there, getting the water into the storm sewers and getting it out of there. Any questions?
How old is Southwood Glen?
Excuse me?
How old is Southwood Glen?
Twenty-three.
So, when it was built, we didn't hook up to the storm drains?
I'm sorry?
When we, it was built, we did not hook up to the storm drains?
It was before my time, and I don't know what was, what was happening at the time. But yeah, we are hooked up to the storm drains, but not the, not, we didn't drain, we drained the surface water, we didn't drain the underneath water. That's what's causing us problems. There's, there's a series of storm drains through that, through the parking lot, and also around the edge of the playground, but the water is, is underneath. The, the subsurface water is what's giving us problems, not the surface water. And there, and we need, so we need to put in perforated piping underneath to get all that, that water into the storm sewer, and then out it goes.
So, and this is one that you obviously revisited the estimate, it was, I think, three fifty.
It was three fifty.
But given your great experience with last year's project, you know, you, why did you make it higher when you experienced a favorable bid, but you went the other direction on this estimate?
Well, I also took a look at, I think we needed the parking lot as well, so there's, there's probably, replace the asphalt, it's really the whole thing, it's the exterior.
In general, construction costs of everything, whether they're small
In general, construction costs of everything, whether they're small projects or not, from last year to this year, have dramatically increased, because the bidding environment is such that there's plenty of work out there. So we've seen that from when we went into the high school project to now, and taking a look at future costs for building, and they're pretty dramatic, because there's more people in our, in our phase, so part of it's just the natural attrition. Generally, if you can figure on the high end, about eight percent increase per year, real normal increase is about five percent a year in increased building costs.
In addition to that, I did, I did, I thought the worst thing I could do, I think, what I heard the auditor say is that Mr. Millsor budgets conservatively on the revenue, and, and let, and, and, you know, budget strong on the expenses and conservatively on the, on the revenue. Well, I'm trying to do the same, you know, take a look, I'd, I'd rather have too much sitting there, and have more contingency to do more things later in the year, than have too small of a number there and bite off more projects, and then we end up in trouble.
I always think it works best to get the best number, instead of trying to hedge on either side of it. That seems to be the, the best method I've seen practiced, so.
Right, that would be if we had a design, and if we had already taken bids, then I could give you a much harder number.
It does say expand, expand playground, does that mean?
The, it's undersized, and it, it, not much, because we don't have a lot of room there, and we're pretty tight on the green space. So we're gonna expand into the hill a little bit, and we're gonna expand off, off to the one side of the play structure area to make it work better. And some of the roadways where, you know, where the, the radiuses are, are pretty tight, and people have a tendency to rut and go over the edges all the time, especially the buses, those are fair, fairly large vehicles. So we're gonna try to make it better than it was originally.
And I know you also had asked the question about the locker rooms at the high school, and you had indicated, I'm not clear, you said next year, what does that mean, next year? Like, next budget year, or the next, next budget year?
Well, right now, it's totally in limbo, I, I answer that, because the architects that we're working with, the high school locker room coordination has to be such that if we look at anything that's in addition to that in the future, whether it be a field house, or whatever it might be, that's gotta be coordinated, so that we don't go in there and do repairs or remodel, or whatever, to existing facilities, come back to add new and wish we didn't do it. So we're, we're looking at the total scope of a, of an entire project in, in context, to be able to say, okay, if we just did the locker rooms, here's how that would fit, and so right now, the, that's what the architects are working on, so that's something we're gonna continually look at, and it could be next year, it could be down the road even further, we just don't have a handle on that yet.
Oh, so we have architects looking at the high school and the middle school?
Yes.
Are you saying, they're looking at both?
Well, they're working on the high school, because specifically, they're zeroed into the locker rooms, but it has to be as part of a comprehensive plan. It can't be just looking at the locker rooms, it's gotta be, if more is added to that ten years down the road, we have to have made correct strategic decisions on building when we do the locker rooms.
I understand that, that makes sense, I just thought we were focused on the middle school.
We are, that's, that's where our focus is, but it's like, we have people come in all the time to give us estimates of, five years down the road, if we wanna do this, what do we have to be concerned about? So we can start thinking about if we do any sort of remodel, construction, renovation of anything, you know, make sure you don't do this, because in five years, if you do this, it could cost you more, you wouldn't be able to add to it, or whatever the circumstances might be, so. The dedication for the architects is the middle school, but because of the project at the high school, we're bringing them in, we're very pleased with them, we're bringing them in to get that structure in place for us, so we can identify some costs, and then determine whether we can go forward, and when we can go forward.
If I may, Mrs. Wickowski, don't, don't confuse a possible referendum at the middle school with a project that needs an architect at the high school. I think they're really apples and oranges. What Dr. Patz has wisely said is that we wanted to concentrate on the Forest Park for any sort of a referendum project. However, this might be something that we handle within ourselves, but we need an architect to help us. So the, so an architect doesn't necessarily mean a referendum.
I wasn't assuming that.
Okay.
I just didn't know we were using architects for this work. And we still have an open project there, correct? At the high school, the high school project is not closed.
Right.
So there is an opportunity to use that funding for that? Are you thinking that way, or not?
No.
No?
No.
All the funds were spent?
All the funds were spoken for, we haven't paid everything out yet.
Okay, thank you.
We have the safety report?
I'm sorry?
The next would be a safety report. Is that also Mr. Cludier?
It is now.
Okay.
I, I, I was unaware of that item being in here, but from a safety standpoint, we have, there's a couple things I could talk about. I know, you know, we have all secure entrances now at the buildings, those are a couple years old now, and we've maintained that at the high school, so we continue to have a secured entry. But the other piece of safety that I can speak to is that we've brought forward the Safety Advisory Committee again, which includes police, fire, public health, the entire student and employee health committee, which is Dr. Miller and, and our two nurses, and myself, and we've started, and some administrators, and we've started to look at, first of all, our crisis response guidelines, as to what that means, and then we've, and then we're taking a look at potentially some apps that could be on your phone, that might improve communication during a, during a crisis. So that's something we're taking a look at. One of the ones we're looking at, for example, connects directly with Power School and updates every twenty-four hours, every evening, every, about midnight or something. And so if the, if, so, everything I have is gonna be as current as, as we have, the information. So we're looking at those kinds of things, so that would be a safety report, is what we're looking at. Potentially implementing that maybe for September. But we've gotta do some more research, we've gotta get everybody on board.
Pigging, piggybacking off what Mark said, the other thing that I would like to make the board aware of is, you know, there's, with things that happen throughout the country in schools and everything like that, active shooter training has been a, a big issue in terms of whether schools do it. There are many schools throughout the country who do not do it, who do a modified version of it, or who do it full-blown. I've been meeting with the Franklin Police Department and the head of the SWAT Division, and on March fourteenth, we are gonna start, we're gonna be doing some different phases of bringing it in, some active shooter training for staff, and that'll be entire K-12 staff at the, at the high school, and that'll be talking about a lot of fundamental things. Just as an example, you know, the old theory of, if you have an active shooter, was to lock everybody down in the building and wait till the police got there, and that's taken a total three sixty now, it's get out if you can, and, you know, first man there, if you've got a gun, you, you find the shooter and that kind of thing. So it, those kinds of things that I think, I know that we have a lot of staff unawareness of different trends that have taken place because of some of the incidents that have happened in schools throughout the country. So we'll be beginning that, the, the program is being developed by the SWAT team here in, in Franklin, and then they'll can run it by us and see if we wanna add to it, or modify it in any way. We are not gonna come in with guns in the buildings and those kinds of things. Every school that I talked to that had done that wished they wouldn't have, it strikes a great deal of fear in people. You know, you hear the gun going off, or the sound of a gun, all of a sudden, you hear somebody drop a book, and all, you know, you're on edge, and so we're gonna be real conscious of, of what our staff is, is trained on, and is, is an example, at the high school being such a large building, our staff has gotta know that if, if we did unfortunately get into that situation, you may not be in your classroom, it might be between classes during the given day, and we've got fifteen hundred kids all over the place. Our students and staff gotta know, where do you go? You know, how do I get out of there, and what can I do? As an example, one of the means is that sort of an anything goes, if there's a window, and you know there's a shooter out there, you take a chair and you break the window. You don't be afraid to do those kinds of things. That's one of the big things that is being stressed, is you don't try to hide from these people, because there have been numerous incidents where you're hiding behind a desk where Mark is, the shooter knows you're there, he just walks around, and, you know, it's a bad situation. So it's, you find a way to get out of there in, in the best way you can, but all those kinds of things, I think that'll be very helpful for our staff, and that'll be starting on March fourteenth, in the morning of one of our in-service days, so.
I'm glad to hear that, especially with the open concept, in our high school especially.
Is a board member on the safety committee?
No.
I thought.
Used to be.
Used to be, okay.
I didn't know we got, I did not know we got rid of the, that committee.
Well, we didn't really get, we didn't really get rid of it, but it did all its work, and then times, you know, now we need to resurrect, resurrect, revise what we did before. So it's really bringing back the same group, it just hasn't been around for a year or so, well, they had done their work.
All right, any other questions? Thank you very much.
Are you still doing item C?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Item C then, superintendent's report, the middle school project update.
Well, it's been a little quiet, but as everyone knows, the board's focus is to take a look at our middle school in terms of future facilities and so on. We've had extensive work done now by the architects that come in the building, to analyze it, to bring engineers in to take a look at our systems, and so on, so forth. And right now, we're in the process of making sure we're getting pricing on a lot of the things that we have to do. We're making sure that we brought, just this morning, we had a meeting where we brought people in to talk about if we have programming five years down the road, or ten years down the road, what do we want that building to look like, certainly not the way it is now. And we have to be able to take a look at, as we go forward with taking a look at building, remodeling, or whatever the case may be, what kind of programming dictates what kind of facility that we have. So we had that meeting this morning with a number of people, and took a look at some of the options that may be out there, and some of the considerations that we have to have. Right now, as you know, one of the big issues that we want to do is make sure that we get the survey out to the community. Talked with Bill Foster a week or so ago, that'll still be done early part of February, by then we'll have the costing, so we can put some of those costing figures in the survey, like we did for the high school project, the feedback that we received, and that was positive, people wanna see numbers, you know, they wanna know what's, what it's going to cost them. Along with that, probably in, in February, to the board, we will be coming to you and talking you through, you know, zero to one, or zero to five, what kinda options do we have. We're gonna put everything on the table, from building a brand-new middle school across the way right here, to just pretty much doing nothing. I can tell you right now, they're pretty much doing nothing, has got a price tag on it of about five million dollars, to upgrade that facility, to do the things that we've gotta do over a period of time, just in general maintenance, and so on, so forth. And then, of course, you have to take a look at those, what falls in between there. So the architects are preparing some things that we'll be showing you, the board, to take a look at, and to get your input on, and see what you think of them, but we wanna be able to get to a point where when we go to the community, they can see, you know, somebody will ask, well, why don't you just build new? We will have that answer, and there will be those that'll say, well, I don't think you should do anything. Well, then we, we'll have those answers in terms of what it will cost to do nothing, why we need to do some things. Again, the key component of this whole thing is we want our sixth grade up in the middle school, so we want a true middle school configuration of six, eight grade alignment. It's best for our kids, it's best for instruction, it's best for programming, and a lot of other areas. So in February, we have decided whether it be the first or the second meeting, we'll be bringing that to you, we'll have some actual things that you can look at and analyze, in other words, where's the gym, and where would the cafeteria be, and we want your input. Just this morning, we had some really good ideas from some people to, to change a couple of things around that just make more sense, you know? And again, it's, it's about kids in that building, and how we offer instruction, and so on, so forth, and then also making it sure it's safe, obviously is number one. But then taking a look at the entrance and exit, this road right here is a, is a big factor in this whole process, in terms of how we do that, where the parking goes, so you'll see some, at least initial types of drawings and so on, or pictures, if you will, at that meeting in February, but it is by no means the, the end result. So we'll have some pricing, we'll work on the survey, Debbie and Linda will get together when we get those, to talk about the initial initiation of that survey. We'll be bringing that to the board, for you to have your input on, to see if we're asking questions that you think are appropriate, and then we'll go from there, just like we did last year in the high school project. So, though it seems like there's not a lot being done on, on the visible end, behind the scenes, there's an awful lot of it getting done, and so, if you have any questions on that, I'd be glad to answer them. Otherwise, Jim or Mark, anything to add that, or Chris or Nick, too, you guys were in that, in that meeting this morning, too, so. It's moving forward.
Survey and the plans before February, or?
Not before February.
Or like?
In February, we will have examples of what configurations we might use, and then they're very, 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 very preliminary, they, they're nothing. And then in February, we'll have the numbers to begin developing the survey.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's where we're at. It's sort of exciting, it was exciting to take a look at that today, and it's a building that definitely needs some renovation, could actually use more destruction than it could renovation, but that's my opinion, so.
Thank you.
All right, item nine A, the Student International Travel Discussion.
I asked this to be put on the agenda a while back, right after the bombings and the terrorist activity in, over in London and throughout the country, and at that time, many of the local school districts who had trips planned, international trips planned, were very concerned about whether they should move forward with them, what should be done. MPS decided to just disband with all of theirs, and so on. And what we've been doing for the last several weeks is tracking the State Department progress on terms of what should we be aware of, do we have concerns? Because we have the ban going to Ireland, we have people going to Spain, we have people going to Japan and Germany, and so on, so forth. And the bottom line is, even as, as recent today, the State Department said there really isn't a concern for international travel. One of the biggest concerns now is, are the smaller types of incidents where people are stealing stuff from cars, and, you know, those kinds of things, you know, and that the, the, the one recommendation they gave is simply, you have to be aware of what's going on around you, which is true anywhere, whether it be here in Franklin, or over in, you know, Barcelona, or wherever it might be. So we did have each one of the organizations that's doing an international travel contact, not only their travel advisory people, but also the State Department to find out reports, and so this is an update report, the last one I got was this morning, that simply said there, there are no warnings out there, there are no alerts out there at this time, other than minor ones like I was telling you about, some of the stealing cars, and, and those kinds of things, in some of the certain countries, and so on. So it would be our recommendation administratively to, that, to continue on with our trips, with the caveat that if something were to happen that changes that, we pull the plug, if, if we find out that that's necessary, which we really don't think is gonna happen. Of course, the, the other part of that is, is that people are putting money down on these trips, and in many cases, we're able to hold off as long as we can and, and get a refund, but there will come a point in time where people may lose money, but that's just one of the things that we have to deal with, if and when it were to come about. But at this point in time, I think we're, we're in pretty good shape to allow continued planning with the trips that are on the docket for this summer, as well as in the, the future.
Participation in all these trips is voluntary, right?
Yes.
So if, if a family's not comfortable with their child going?
Absolutely.
They can opt out, okay.
Yeah.
And I assume that our staff members feel safe, if they didn't, we wouldn't force them to go either?
Right.
I'm sure, okay.
Have we talked to the parents, or notified them of, of what we're hearing, and so that they're giving some thought as to whether or not they wanna take these, whatever risks they feel there are?
Sure, that'll be next, Alan, because we wanted to bring it to the point where we got to that final tonight, to be able to say, as a board, do you have concerns where you wanna say, this is off the table, or let's move forward or not? They will then in turn go back and say, we're still continuing on with these trips, you know, we're proceeding as we always have been, and we'll continue to collect the deposit money, or whatever it might be associated with it. So we'll get, we'll have each one of those organizations that's sponsoring the trip, or leading the trip, get something out to the parents, and say, here's where this is at, here's the current status from the State Department, and to Melissa's point, if you do have a concern, feel free to, you know, cancel out now.
I see that, just on January eleventh, the, the newest alert is for Haiti, and the world alert was reduced. So my concern is that, I mean, I always think a parent, it's, it's at their cost, and it's a big cost if they choose to pull out, but of course, you should be able to pull your child out if you have a concern. But my concern for the future, with everything that's going on, is that we have some groups going with only one adult chaperone, you know, with twelve students, and maybe only one adult chaperone, so that, I like, I would like us to consider bringing our policy back for maybe the two thousand seventeen year, and maybe you think about requiring two adult chaperones. I don't know that that would make a difference, but at least to discuss it, because...
Well, I think you bring up a good point, it's, you know, whether you have two kids or twelve kids, if something happens to the supervising adult, now what? And so I think it is a legitimate thing for the board to have a discussion, and maybe a policy review on if we're gonna have international trips, or trips in general, that there has to be two adults there.
I mean, Mr. Kenya was in Japan when the tsunami hit that time, and I believe he was alone, so, I mean, he might have some input.
Sure.
But he had other families there, I think, when he had those students there.
Right.
And, but I, I hope when they're going on these trips that they, I'm sure they're discussing this.
Well, I think a lot of it has to, we have to credit our, our staff that does these trips. First of all, I think they have, number one, we have good kids. But number two, I think the staff is concerned about their safety more than anything and they have procedures in place, you know, whether it's a curfew or we'll meet here or we're, we're all doing this, we're all doing that. And, but I think it's worthy of a discussion, you know, occasionally to be able to say, you know, and get input from them, you know? When you want to go on this trip, what, Mr. Kenya, what would have happened if something would have happened to you? Who's in charge and what happens?
I mean, if a student needs to be left behind in a hospital or something and you have one adult, I just.
I think it's a worthy discussion.
I mean, at least a contingency plan. Perhaps there's a local, I know he has a lot of contacts there from all the years he's been doing it. Perhaps there's a local person that could be designated as a backup, you know? But I agree, it's a discussion worth having. And I also agree that, you know, there's al, there's always a risk with, with travel, you know, especially international travel. But I feel like the kids get enough of a benefit that it's worth it at this point.
Any other comments? We'll move on to nine B, the WASB resolutions discussion. So we were asked to look at the resolutions. Mr. Nielsen is the delegate this year. So if we have comments, we will pass them along to him. I have to bring that up. Starting from the beginning, does anyone have any comments? I know I had a, I just wanted to say that, starting with 1606, I mean, I very much support the special ed categorical aid one. I don't have any issues with it. I'm having trouble getting mine up here. And I wanted to ask Mr. Millsor. Are there any, do you have yours, though? On 1609, the sliding scale, what is that? Anything we have to worry about?
I had the same question when I read it.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about it?
And then I, I went further and it seems to be a mechanism that would help small school districts.
I've got to. No concerns for us?
Well, the concern for us would be the more aid they get, the less aid we get. So I, I don't know if we'd be in favor of that one because there's no real information there on how does that sliding scale work or how much is it going to affect anything? It talks about when they're looking at it that they, in a, in a small school district, their class size might be half as large as ours, so their cost per student is more. Well, then should we lose half of our aid so that it could be better for them? No, I'm not, I'm not sure I'd agree to it just saying, go ahead, create a sliding scale that gives more aid to some districts and not the others without knowing more about it. It's too, too big a number to do that. And in this area of the state, we send much more money to Madison for this than we ever receive back already.
So you would recommend, Mr. Nielsen?
I would say no to that one.
I mean, a lot of these, you have to look where they came from.
So would the board agree with that then on Mr. Millsor's recommendation?
Yes.
And on 1610, student assessments, I would assume, Nick and Chris, that you would support that?
For sure.
Yeah, absolutely. We need a consistent assessment that we can draw.
Say there's one caveat to that, though. I don't support it unless there's accountability attached to it. Because when you start talking private schools and some of these other things, we're still in that mode where public schools are held accountable and the data is used either for or against them. But these people still are not being held accountable and I have a problem with that.
This resolution, I think specifically references those other bodies taking the same state assessment, so.
Not only taking the assessment, but it's used. You know, now we take a state assessment, we get graded on it. Well, they take a state assessment, they don't get graded on it. So the playing field's got to be level.
Same with 1611, state mandated graduation requirement?
This is a reaction, I think, to the civics exam requirement. So, yeah, I would be in favor of this as well.
And then the next one that occurred to me was 1614, mental health support. I just think that's really important, really important right now.
It's a big issue.
And then I, I know Dr. Pats and I, we were talking about 1615, transfer territory. We both don't support that, especially with our district. And Oak Creek School District, we don't know how they feel about it, but because we have so many districts in Franklin here, it could just be a nightmare for us, Dr. Pats.
Yeah. Jim and I have talked about it, too. We just don't think it has a viable reason for going forward. It's going to create referendums or so-called referendums and it's going to put us in a situation where we are going to continually have to be catering to, and I think that's an appropriate way to put it, maybe a small segment of a population because they want to reduce it down from 7% to 1%. And if they don't like the elementary school or whatever, then all of a sudden, we have to go to the referendum and do that. Well, that's going to have an impact on us in terms of facilities alone, let alone, I don't think it's very good, having gone through or having lived through the tail end of reorganization of districts in another district. It, this creates bad blood and I don't think it's, it's healthy at all. You know, right now, I, I talked to the lady at the state. She said, we have very few of these requests. So I don't understand why it's even coming forward, other than a few people who.
Probably some very heated little pieces that they really want this. Very persistent and.
You know, I know we have people that live on our Oak Creek boundary that are near south with Glenn that would jump on this in a heartbeat to say, we live right there, right across the street. That's where we want to go. And of course, I know they have issues with where they're sending their elementary kids to. I think it's a new elementary or whatever it might be. Well, that's going to have an impact on us should these kinds of things go forward. And, you know, it doesn't say anything about, well, you could have a referendum every week, you know, in a month or whatever it might be. So I just think it's a bad idea. I think, Jim, would you comment on it or?
I would agree. It's, it's not good. It would put us in the mode, you know how hard it is to get information to the public when we are holding a referendum? And it could come up more often and we'd have to explain this complicated system of aid to our district and losing this if we lose this street full of houses. It's just not a good situation.
It's very easy to get petitions started now, too, with internet. I believe, I still can't get mine up right now. I don't know why. All of a sudden, I lost it. But didn't it mention petitions in it?
In this one?
By petition, yeah.
By petition.
Yeah. It's just reducing it to such a low level by petition, so I, since we have, we have three districts in Franklin, it's just not good for us. So do we have any consensus on that?
I agree.
I agree.
Okay. Are there any other concerns with the resolutions then for us to let Tim know?
1616, what are they talking about with this prevailing wage? And then get it.
It used to be that they would do a, a survey or the numbers would be ready for different trades and what you would have to pay for that trade. So you might get a bid that was very low and you'd say, that's great. But they wouldn't be paying the prevailing wage amount to their people and their bid would have to increase to pay that. Why a school district would want to pay prevailing wages? I have no idea. It was a good thing that we didn't have to, to pay prevailing wage. Because it allows a company to come in and say, hey, we'll do a good job for you. We do this all the time, but we don't pay this high amount that's on this chart that we have to pay. So it should, not paying this should help keep costs down. Why you'd want to go back to it and say, well, we want to pay that higher cost? I, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I looked at it and that's kind of what I thought, that this one, this particular resolution was something that would support union wages? And it has nothing to do with education. I don't know why we would support this. You're right.
Right.
So Janet, you're going to pass these recommendations along to Tim?
I'll, I'll pass them along to him in an email. And then if he has any questions, I can tell him. Look at the tape if you wanted, but I, I have them all written down.
Thank you.
Okay, are the two that the resolution, the rationale, it's the same as a resolution? Are we going to blanketly just not support those? Because obviously they're not bright enough to have, I mean, the people who put that together didn't give enough thought to putting an adequate rationale to support it.
Which numbers were?
I don't, I don't even remember what they were. I was just reading, I remember reading through them and go, what is that? There's, the rationale and the resolution are the same.
Well, I think I need to explain that because I did serve on this committee.
Yes, you did.
Where they initially come, these are submitted.
Okay.
And there is a, there is a big book of stuff that they've already accumulated, that they've voted on. And if, if the issue is already in that book and we, there's already a position, they get eliminated. And they really have to decide whether it's worth discussing across, across the broad membership. That's what that means when they say they advance it because they want to allow the discussion to occur. It's worthy of a discussion. That's the only way I can justify why they've stated it the way they stated it. I think if you run up the rationale, you have to kind of dig deeper in the document, too. Because they do have some rationale in some of these. Further, further back. But the idea is, is it worthy? Because remember, this is at the convention. Everybody is represented from across the state. So they don't want to waste time of something that they don't think is worthy of discussion. Some of this is, is an issue that would have some broad discussion or interest in.
You didn't clarify it for me one bit. If the rationale in, in the, the resolution say the same thing, you, you don't have a rationale. And why is it even here then?
It says, advance this resolution to let the WASB members decide.
But give a rationale as to what you would be wanting to make a decision on. Otherwise, stop wasting our time. I mean, that's why I looked at it. If somebody at work.
Be the member next year.
Yeah, next year you're the delegate.
Next year you're on, you're on.
Set somebody up something.
Forwarding your name to the.
And said they wanted this resolution and here's the rationale to the same thing. I'd say, get out of here, you're a smart guy.
Okay. Moving on to item 10 on the agenda. I'm looking for a motion to enter into closed session to discuss employment, promotion, compensation and performance evaluation data for administrative staff pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85 sub 1, sub C. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Larson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Witkowski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have roll call, please? Mrs. Witkowski?
Yes.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Aye.
Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we need a recess? Okay, then we are now in closed session at 7:23. 36. Okay, we're back in open session. And item 11 is a board meeting debriefing. Are there any comments about the board meeting?
That was a good meeting and I want to say that I know I asked quite a few questions, but I was very, I think there was a lot of response and I appreciate the effort to, to do that.
Thank you.
I, I do have to comment about your questioning the one question to Mark where he said something about the, the cost and the changing. And it, it came across as, as mean-spirited when you said, I like to usually get the right cost right, right away. I don't think you meant it that way, but it came, I just felt it was kind of like a slap in his face.
Sorry.
No, you have to apologize. I just wanted to let you know.
Okay, future agenda items. January 7th, it's, sorry, January 27th, policy 5801, student progress reporting. January 27th, the enrollment chapter 220 update. January 27th, administrative evaluation and recommendations. February 10th, the K-12 counseling program update. Is that something new?
We've done some new things, sir.
Never heard of that. Any other items from the board?
Also, I think in January, there's a specific policy, but we want to also maybe bring back the schedule and just kind of update everybody on what the progress that we're at.
I think as part of the liaison report, we'll update the board on the schedule itself and the progress we're making and what's coming up and what might not be addressed, but.
When did you want to do that? January?
Right, January 27th. As part of the liaison report, which would also include that policy that the board has requested be addressed again.
We may look at that February date, too, for the architects to come in. I'll just see if they're prepared at that time to do it. We won't know for a little while.
Okay. All right, looking for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Alexandrovich?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Witkowski. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're adjourned at 7:39.